However, your accounting, I can see that probably happening, the idea of going to the hybrid meetings at the very least. You might also consider going forward, it might be the sort of things where you might still do your workshops on Zoom. If you're not having public comments and testimony and so forth, and then have the meetings with the public hearings and so forth on as a hybrid. I think we're all gonna have to feel our way through it.
Yes. Welcome, Josh.
Thank you.
And it's just about seven o'clock. We are waiting another new participant, but I think that we should probably get started relatively soon.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Maria, we're, we haven't been made aware that Robin did not intend on a hearing tonight, so we respect the full constituency.
Okay. Well, it's now 7:02. Why don't we get started and then hopefully our other new member, Robin, will be able to join us at some point. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is a regular meeting of the South Kingston Planning Board. The date is Tuesday, June 22, 2021. The first item on our agenda is roll call. Joe Murphy?
Here.
Paul Jordan?
Here.
Susan Axelrod?
Here.
Peter Di Stefano?
Here.
Josh Daley?
Here.
Robin Pathier is absent at this time, and Maria Mack is here. Also attending our staff, Jamie Rabbit?
Present.
Jay Parker?
Here.
Brian Wagner?
Here.
Rich Bourbonay?
I'm here.
And our legal counsel, Andy Tights?
Here.
Our next agenda item is the consent agenda. This consists of approval of minutes, April 13, 2021 work session, April 27, 2021 regular session, May 6, 2021 work session, May 11, 2021 work session. Also, request for extension of combined master preliminary plan approval, major land development project Hampton Place full build out. Request for extension of final plan approval, major subdivision heritage estates. Major subdivision comprehensive permit establishment of performance bond, the village at Curtis Corner. And the report of the administrative officer, which includes administrative subdivisions, Ernst Dykstra administrative subdivision approval, minor subdivisions, Angel E minor subdivision final approval. No major subdivisions or land development projects and change to coastal community structures, Smith Roy Carpenter's Beach Unit 15E9. Sizmansky Roy Carpenter's Beach Unit 13W11, Sizmansky Roy Carpenter's Beach Unit 13W10. If there are no changes or corrections to the consent agenda, would someone like to make a motion for approval?
Sorry, Maria, could I remove a couple of items from the consent agenda?
Certainly. What would you like to remove?
I would like to remove the minutes from May 6. The minutes from May 11. And I also don't know if because it's on the agenda tonight, if, if it's possible to remove the village at Curtis Corner and ask planning staff to provide an update of where the cemetery stands since board members and potentially the public haven't heard an update on the cemetery situation. I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
Jamie? Jamie, is that all right with you?
Yes.
All right. Why don't we take it starting with the minutes? Susan?
Okay, on May 6. It's not a big deal, but we had, well, it is a big deal. We had a listening.
Actually, excuse me. Yep, the Sandy Tights, could you just take a vote on the rest of all the consent agenda items before you take the open ones?
Certainly. We've done it both ways in the past, but would someone like to make a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the remaining items as presented with the exceptions of the ones removed by Susan.
We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. This is Paul Jordan.
Second from Paul. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Raise your hands as well.
Should I abstain as a new member? I just. I'm just wondering whether I should abstain or.
Probably would be a wise.
That's what I thought.
With one abstention, Josh Daley. All right. Susan, you have the floor.
Thank you. On the May 6 agenda, we had a number of people from the public called in that night and make commentary. I would like to change the spelling on one of the names. She is listed as Katie Collins, but her actual first name is Cateri, K A T E R I.
Susan, saying that again, K A T?
E R I. K A T E R I.
The fourth name under listening sessions. Okay.
And then the sixth name on that list is John Climate Scientist. That was Dr. John King, who's an oceanographer over at URI GSO. So could we just add, his name is Dr. John King?
I, I, and I'll ask counsel, I believe he did not identify by name. He only identified himself as someone having expertise in the field. So I would defer to counsel on that. We can check the meetings and see if he actually announced his name.
I would say if he did not identify himself by name, then we should leave it out of the minutes.
Jamie, that is my recollection as well. Because I didn't, I know Dr. King, I didn't recognize, I didn't realize that's who it was. So I don't think he said his name.
Okay, so we'll leave that one as is.
Okay.
All right.
That's all I have on those minutes, but on April 13, I have a couple of questions. Wait, I lost myself. Sorry, wrong ones.
I believe you said May 11.
May 11. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong ones. On May 11, on public comment, Mr. Petrucci called in and confirmed that he had contracted with an engineering firm. Could we identify in the minutes which engineering firm he contracted? I believe he stated it at that meeting. Did he not state it at the meeting?
Um. Madam Chair.
I believe so. I think it was Paul.
Question. We can check that. I have issues adding it. It was around a, like, pocket Rhode Island.
Archaeology.
Yes.
So.
And it was an archaeological firm, I believe.
And then further down on that letter, on that agenda, letter I, update on legal issues, update from special legal counsel for planning and zoning relative to any newer ongoing legal issues. Were there updates given to us that night that should be reflected in the minutes? If they aren't, it's not listed here. That anything was mentioned that night specifically?
Jamie, is that something that you could go back and check?
I will. If you give me one moment, I'll double check that.
What, what we could actually do is defer these minutes to our next meeting and give staff the opportunity to make those changes and look up that information. Is everyone agreeable with that?
Perfect.
Sounds good.
Madam Chair, my notes just reference update on legal, and again, I don't think there was anything specific, but we will reference it on review.
That sounds reasonable. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Susan, you also had requested that we remove the village at Curtis Corner. Would you like to explain the information that you're seeking?
At that time, we talked about, sorry, a couple of months ago, we talked about whether or not there was a cemetery at Curtis Corner. Our developer was going to do some research on that, and I wonder if staff could give an update to the board, to new board members and the audience about where that stands.
Madam Chair, this is Andy Tights. Before you do that, could you have a motion to add to the agenda? Because the agenda just says establishment of performance bond. So if you could ask, if we could have a motion to add to the agenda, village at Curtis Corner, for discussion purpose only, update on historic cemetery.
I'd like to entertain a motion for discussion purposes only to add the discussion about the village at Curtis Corner. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Susan. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Joe. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays, abstentions, motion carries. Andy, do you think we should take up this discussion at this point in time or?
Um, you've added it to the agenda, so you might as well.
Okay. And then this is not the same as the consent agenda item, which is the establishment of the performance bond. Would you recommend us having this other discussion to begin with and then vote on the performance bond?
Yeah.
All right. Jamie?
I apologize. I have Rob Quinn calling in. She is having difficulties with her internet due to the thunderstorm. So I'm gonna put her on speaker so she can at least listen in, Curtis Corner, with regards to the archaeological review. So based on my understanding from a conversation with Alex Petrucci, who was the developer of that site, he had hired archaeological, public archaeological services out of Patucket, Rhode Island, to undertake a analysis on site of what was potentially there. They actually did a formal excavation of the area in question that started in the kind of northeast corner center to the lot next to the three previous lots that were developed along Curtis Corner Road. That area was excavated to approximately five or six feet, approximately 50 to 60 feet from an east to west direction. And then it ran another 70 or 80 feet in a southerly direction. During that excavation, I was informed that they did not find any formal burial sites, but they did find a piece of cloth and a fragment of bone. Mr. Petrucci has asked that Dupree Engineering be back on the site. They surveyed the location of the finds based on onsite investigations, and we are awaiting information from Dupree with regards to where those were found, how they impact the potential development. And once we receive that, we can advise the developer what potential permitting path he would need to undertake. It's my understanding that the location of the items that they found do not impact the layout of the proposed cul-de-sac and do not impact the proposed development of the lots that are adjacent to what's called SK 198 as a cemetery site. So it's my understanding they have a couple of options. They can formally request that the town abandon the cemetery based on the, you know, evidence that they found through the archaeological dig, or they could potentially just recognize it as an existing cemetery and look at potentially modifying or working around their development proposal, given an existing site within development. So I do not know which path they are gonna choose to go. Again, it's my understanding they did find two small items. They did not find any grave sites or formal burial lots, and we're waiting for new information or refined information.
Thank you, Jamie. Are there any questions from board members? Susan, you're satisfied with this? Um, I would.
Can you get a motion on the item number seven that was removed?
Yes, that was my next, going to be my next request. Would someone like to make a motion on the consent agenda item number seven, which is major subdivision comprehensive permit establishment of performance bond for the village at Curtis Corner?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Susan. Do we have a second? Second from Paul. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye and raise your hands, please.
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Before we continue to the meat of the agenda, I wanted to announce that two items that are listed on this evening's agenda will not be heard. The first one is the plant-based compassionate care development plan review advisory to zoning, I believe. Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, that they are asking for a continuance to September.
That is correct.
Our regular meeting in September would be September 28, I believe.
That is your next, that is your regularly scheduled meeting in September.
Would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion and move those two items to the next meeting in July.
Well, we need to actually, this is the plant-based compassionate care, this motion, and that is going to be continued until September 28. We'll do them as separate motions because they have different timeframes associated with them.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a suggestion, this application was originally scheduled back in March. In March, they contacted the planning department, requested a continuance to June 22. They have again requested extension to or continuance to September. I think it probably should be understood and worthwhile, and Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, to ensure that the public notice be made, again, given the amount of time that has passed and the potential confusion that might be on the scheduling of this.
Good point.
This is Andy Tights. I would concur with that. Would be a good idea.
Thank you, Jay. So we have a motion from Joe. We had a second from, was it Susan?
Okay.
And why don't we do, since we are now in the main agenda, let's do a roll call vote. Joe Murphy?
Before we do that, I assume that the extension would also give us a corresponding extension for review, correct?
This is Jay. This is, that would be a DPR. The Plant-Based Compassion Center is a DPR advisory.
Okay, so there's no formal time. Okay, great. All right. Yay.
Paul Jordan?
Yes.
Susan Axelrod?
Yes.
Peter Di Stefano?
Yep.
Josh Daley?
Yes.
And Maria Mack votes yes. The other item that is going to be continued is South County Hospital. Jamie, do you want to give a brief explanation of what we're going to do with this?
Yes, absolutely, Madam Chair. So with regards to South County Hospital, there was a planned public hearing this evening. My humble apologies to any member of the public who is with us this evening to hear that and potentially comment on that application. But there was a defect in the public notice to a butters. The requirements of the regulations state that they need to be sent to property owners, and the applicant mistakenly sent them to properties and didn't realize there were a few properties that were owned by people who did not reside at the site next to, sites next to the hospital. So they are in the process of correcting that defect. So again, our recommendation is to continue that hearing, not open that hearing and add it to your July agenda. With the possibilities of having a special meeting because it is such a substantial application.
What is the date for July?
We have. It'll be July 27.
July 27?
The regularly scheduled meeting in July is July 27. There were some discussions of potentially having a special meeting on the 22 of July. That would be the third Thursday. Or possibly July 29, but Andy, you had a conflict on the 29th, correct?
No, I am, I believe the the 22nd or the 29th was okay. It was the 15th that we couldn't do.
And the 29th is the fifth Thursday of the month, so in all likelihood, no one has planned a meeting on the fifth Thursday of a month.
I would certainly suggest to board members, based on previous experience, that when we have a complicated application such as this one, that we allow for a special meeting, it tends to be more fair to the applicant and to any other interested parties. Andy, since we have not opened this, do we need a motion to continue it to that specific date? Or shall we just allow staff to re-advertise and then post it at, at it agreed upon date?
Well, my usual yes and no. Legally, since it's gonna be re-advertised anyway, you don't have to continue it to a date certain and leave it to staff. As a practical matter, if, if, if you can get the date set now with people and make sure everybody is ready, it might make more sense just to do it now. You could still, even if you don't formally vote to do it, it might be a good idea to get the consensus as to what date it's gonna go to.
Yes.
So we can all plan our calendars for July.
Yes. Do board members have a preference, the 22nd versus the 29th of July?
My preference would be the 29th, only since the 22nd would also be the affordable housing meeting.
Ah, good point. Brian?
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Good call. Is everyone else fine with the 22nd then?
Not the 29th.
The 29th.
The 29th, sorry.
Yes.
Very good. All right. Let's continue on with our agenda. Our next agenda item is request for release of performance bond and acceptance of roads and infrastructure Sheldon Hill subdivision. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Madam Chairman, we do have Tom Mark in the audience. Check.
And Jay, you can bring him in?
Yep, he should be coming in one moment.
Mr. Mark, you are muted?
Yep. Yes.
Evening, Mr. Mark.
Good evening.
Would you like to give us a brief summary of your request?
Sure. This was a project we started in 2017. The original intent when we developed it was to ultimately transfer the roads to the town. And through the course of, you know, these last few years, we've had follow-up items such as plant screening, tree, road trees, so on and so forth. So all of those items are now completed. And therefore, I was requesting that the performance bond be released, and the formal acceptance of the road would happen by the town. And I may add that, that all the deeds and so forth for the road have been prepared and are in the possession of the town.
And I believe we have a notation and staff comments that DPS is, has been fully satisfied. Rich, is that correct?
Yes, the road, the road is constructed properly. We've inspected. We had a number of back and forth on the pond just to clean it out, and Mr. Mark's taking care of everything for us. And we're fully satisfied at this point.
Very good. Questions, comments from board members? Hearing none. We have two motions for consideration. The first one is on page one of the Sheldon Hill subdivision staff comments. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion. The South Kingston Planning Board hereby authorizes the town finance director to release the existing performance bond in the amount of $66,927 that was previously established as a guarantee of the completion of the site infrastructure and landscaping for the Sheldon Hills subdivision. Prior to releasing the bond, the applicant shall, one, submit a maintenance bond totaling $3,346.45 for those improvements associated with the subdivision, prior to the consideration of the exceptions to the town council, and, two, request the town council to accept the streets and signs associated with this subdivision, and also request the amendment of Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-12, motor vehicles and traffic, Boulevard Street signs designated to include a stop sign within the development. Prior to the release of this performance bond, the Department of Public Services and administrative officer shall certify that items outlined above have been completed to their satisfaction.
We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second? Second from Susan. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a vote. Joe Murphy?
Aye.
Paul Jordan?
Aye.
Susan Axelrod?
Aye.
Peter Di Stefano?
Aye.
Josh Daley?
Aye.
And Maria Mack votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is a pre-application concept plan, major multi-household land development project, Magnolia Lane.
Excuse me. Sorry, Maria, do we, do we have a second motion to make on that first item?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I, Joe, would you like to make that second motion?
I will. The South Kingston Planning Board hereby recommends that upon release of the performance bond and the submittal of the maintenance bond, the town council accepts Abbey Road and Asbury Lane, the street serving the residents of the Sheldon Hills subdivision located off of Winter Street.
Motion from Joe, second. Susan, thank you. Joe Murphy?
Oh, aye.
Paul Jordan?
Aye.
Susan Axelrod?
Aye.
Peter Di Stefano?
Aye.
Josh Daley?
Aye.
Maria Mack votes aye. Our next agenda item, Magnolia Lane, major land development, pre-application concept review, and as a reminder to the board, pre-applications are designed to be a exchange of information. There is no action taken. It is, the goal is to encourage sharing and discussion of the The goal is to encourage sharing and discussion of the project concepts among the participants. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Madam Chair, John Kenyon, Eric Preby, and John DeStagian is with you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you. For the record, I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant. The applicant's property is located on Magnolia Lane. It's designated as Sisters' Platte 57-1, Lot 121. The property is 1.29 acres in size, and it's in an R10 zoning district. The property is vacant and serviced by public water and sewer. When Magnolia Lane was installed, was improved, the applicant did install the services for this property. The applicant's proposing two duplex buildings on the property, which is considered a major multi-household land development project. The property permits a density of 5.8 units, and the applicant's requesting four units. The proposed buildings meet the underlying zoning setback requirements, but this will require waivers from the 100-foot setback requirement for multi households, along with the 50-foot distance between buildings. This is considered a major land development project due to the waivers, but we are requesting that the master and preliminary plans be combined. At the TRC meeting, it was suggested that the buildings could be reduced in size to provide additional room for parking and/or turning radiuses, which the applicant agreed with, and acknowledges that we'll provide updated building plans when we come back with more detailed plans at the next stage of review. Eric Preby is the project engineer, and the applicant is John D'Agostino. They're both here tonight. I was going to have Eric briefly go over existing conditions and then what we're proposing.
Thank you, Mr. Kenyon. Before Mr. Preby gives us his narrative, I'm just wondering if Jamie or Jay can give a little bit of background on this project. It was obviously related to the Oak and Tarn Street project. It was a little bit complicated. And now we have, what was a paper street is now, I believe, a town road. Is that correct?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
So I think it would be useful, particularly for the new members and those who were not here for the previous project, to just have a little bit of background information.
So Madam Chair, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director, if it's okay with you, John Kenyon, representing the applicant, did all the title research, did all of the research associated with the original plating, the legal aspects associated with the paper street, so if he could run down the history of the development from where it was to where it is today, I think his intimate knowledge of the title search and the recording of the plots would do a jester than my overview as a planning director.
Great idea. Thank you. Mr. Kenyon?
Sure. It's been a while. My reflection might be a little rusty, but I believe in 1941, there was a plat recorded, which are the properties to the north of this subject property. I believe there were six or seven lots on that plat, and they eventually turned into the lots that you see before you. We came to the planning board, and there was an amendment to the plat at that time. There were also two lots, one which is the subject property, and then the vacant lot that's adjacent to the subject property to the east. Those were both existing lots. Originally, we thought that this would be done as a minor land development. But when the planning department officials changed, the outlook on multifamily household projects changed. And now, as you know, we've been before you a couple times on these where we needed waivers for the setback and the distance between buildings. Additionally to that, the existing property, we thought it could be done as, without creating the frontage. But it was determined that there's limited frontage due to the drainage facility along a part of the frontage. So this turned into what the applicant thought could be done as a minor subdivision into a major land development project. But as far as the history of this lot, this lot has been in existence for some time. It was a part of that Tarn Street plat that was recorded back in 1941.
And can you give an explanation of the ownership of the road? I remember that being an issue, and the subsequent and future change of what is now being called Magnolia, from a paper street to a town road?
Right. The the street was tarn, and I believe it was Wilson, and connected to Wilson further north. The town determined that they didn't want us to actually connect those, and that was part of the reason for changing the name of it. They didn't want to have two Wilson Streets that weren't connected. So they changed this road to Magnolia. This plat was recorded in 1941, and one of the lots was sold to a third party off of that plat. When that happens, there's what's called an incipient dedication to the town, whereby the property owner is, you could say, offering the town the ability to eventually take ownership of the road and accept the road as a public road. So in South Kingston, what's required is that you build that road to town standards, and then the Town Council eventually accepts that road as a public road. So that's why when you asked the question if it was a public road yet, we said no, because the road has not been completed to town standards at this time.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Kenyon on the background of this project? Mr. Preby, please continue.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Eric Preby. I'm a registered professional engineer with offices at Two Stafford Court in Cranston, Rhode Island. Without going over too much what Attorney Kenyon already did, I'll go over it briefly. Jay, if you could maybe go to actually the next sheet. It's a little more zoomed in and detailed. Like, it's a little tighter on it. Thank you. Perfect. That's, thank you. The parcel land is Sisters' Platte 57-1, Lot 121. It is a 1.29 acre parcel. It is located on Magnolia Lane. As mentioned, so this portion that goes east to west right here, this is what was originally Tarn Street right here, and the part that goes from north to south over here is what used to be Wilson Street. But now it's all Magnolia coming around the bend, because it's all one continuous road now as well. So just to kind of give a little extra background there. All of the improvements with Magnolia are in the process of being installed today. As mentioned, it's not accepted by the town yet, but is in the process of doing that. I'll get to it later, but I know there was a discussion as part of the TRC as well, that the binder that's out there today is actually installed as 22 feet wide, whereas it was proposed as 20 feet wide, and the applicant acknowledges that we need to reduce that down prior to final surface course. So that will be a 20-foot wide course by the time that gets finalized as well. So that was a discussion topic also at the Technical Review Committee. So I just wanted to bring that right up front there. The proposed development will be two duplex units, so four total units here. It's directly off of Magnolia. So today, Magnolia is improved to around this bend here, the roadway. As Attorney Kenyon had mentioned as well, these utilities are put in as well. Both of the detention ponds are in. So there's one pond that's located to the south here, and there's one that's located right here on Lot 6 area. So those are all in today. So all of those utilities are in. Access would be from Magnolia Lane and from a private shared driveway right down the middle here. So you can see that private shared driveway down the middle. There is public water and sewer that's within Magnolia Lane. So it has public services. This property, actually, the whole, the project, when it was developed as well, does have an insignificant alteration permit. So even though this is a pre-application stage with the town, a lot of the improvements, including you can see both the sewer, drainage, water, all of that was all taken into account in the initial stages, and was permitted by Department of Environmental Management with an insignificant alteration permit right there today, to obviously make sure that was all properly reviewed by biologists and engineers. So that has been reviewed and approved by DEM. The allowed density, as mentioned, is 5.8 units, proposing four units out here. The parcel does require, because as one of the requirements as well, if a multi-household land development project abuts a single-family residence, in the ordinance it says you must provide either 50-foot setback or provide a buffer, which can be a 50-foot wooded, it can be a 20-foot partially landscaped, or a 10-foot full landscape screen. The applicant is going to be proposing to do a full landscape screen along the eastern side here as well. So there'll be more details. Again, this is pre-application stage, but we will be providing details with a landscape plan to depict that 10-foot buffer zone over there as well for screening. Also, as mentioned, at the TRC, the discussion was around kind of circulation and parking in this area, and looking at where these garages were for turnarounds and for secondary spots. It was noted that these were shown as single-car garages here, and to be able to provide for two parking spaces for each unit. I was able to take a look, and we talked about shifting back the garages and looking at different unit shapes in this area. But if we shift the garages back here for both sides, if that garage gets shifted back and that gets shifted back, that provides 72 feet of spacing between the garages. So that leaves plenty of room for over a 20-foot parking spot on each side, and then some turnaround area in the middle to be able to come as well. So even if there is a one car in the garage, one car in front of the spot, then there would still be over a 24-foot aisle, which is a typical aisle that you would have in any standard parking lot for backing up and turning and going back out in a perpendicular motion here. So we feel very confident that we can adjust this plan and take that into account. That was an excellent comment. The other comments that we heard were as well for detailed landscaping, which we do acknowledge at the next stage as well. This is a pre-application. So as mentioned, we do request that it's going to be a combined master plan and preliminary. We feel that the amount of detail that would be to make the decisions, we would probably be talking about similar items between master plan and preliminary anyway. So we'd rather provide those details right up front and have all of those details for you right at the next stage. So that's kind of the general overview. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Preby. Before I turn it over to board members, I did want to ask you to give a little bit of an explanation about the drainage and the fact that you have two areas for drainage structures. And if anyone has looked at the most northern parcel, they have an entire lot that is dedicated for drainage as well. And we did have a site visit several years ago, and I recall that drainage was an issue. We saw in a budding property that was having problems pretty consistently with drainage. So if you could just give us a little bit more detail on that issue.
As part of the, yeah, that's a great point. Actually, Jay, if you could go back one more, go back to that previous plan, it shows a little bit more. Perfect, thank you. It just kind of shows everything. So yeah, as mentioned, this lot over here is also a drainage lot. So I mean, in looking at a lot of the developments that you see, it's clear that when you see one, two, and three basins in such a small area, you know that we've really looked at taking some of this. There were some previous existing issues with drainage in this area. We were able to help with that and alleviate some of those issues by providing additional drainage areas as well. So I would think, you know, in probably some of the subdivisions that you've seen that are of this size, and even just for the number of lots that are just located in this area, you don't typically see that many detention basins. Usually, it's a lesser of a number. So it has been designed to be able to pick that all up, including the roadway, the existing areas that are contributing from surrounding areas as well. Again, a nice, large detention basin here on Lot Number One, that's a dedicated drainage lot. There's also one located right here at the corner. This entire roadway's picked up right here. There's a drainage swale that runs directly along here. So it's using an open practice, a nice best management practice here with an open drainage. Then it comes through this head wall to a culvert that comes straight across here, gets pretreated right in here. It has a sediment forbey, and then gets settled out and has some infiltration directly on-site as well. And then the other side here as well, there is also a swale that comes along this portion of the roadway here, and it comes, there's actually a head wall that's located right in here, and it comes through the new area here that comes to this basin here as well. So I know that in the previous, when the roadway design had gone through, I know that the Department of Public Services Office had given a very comprehensive review, looking at the drainage calculations and ensuring that everything met to the standards as well. So those were provided previously.
Thank you. Questions, comments from board members?
I just have a quick question for clarification. Is what we're being asked to review right now strictly limited to Lot 7, Sisters' Platte 57-1, Lot 121? And there are no suggested changes or no required changes to what we originally approved outside of that lot? Or is this proposal for Lot 7 requiring changes outside of that lot that we're also being asked to consider right now?
For the record, Eric Preby, only what is on Lot 7. So the Sisters' Platte 57-1, Lot 121, is the only thing that's being proposed with the pre-application.
And to follow up that, what's being proposed and what we're asking to consider has no impacts outside of that lot, other than what we had previously reviewed and approved when we approved the subdivision?
For the record, Eric Preby, yes, that's correct, Mr. Murphy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I have a quick question. This is Susan. I don't really understand the drainage and the water on the site and the multiple drainage basins. So I wonder if, on this site with four buildings and four garages and that long driveway, if at least the long driveway would be made permeable, or there would be some other way to control runoff from this site, so that it's all just not overflowing into those drainage basins? Like, is there a way to control the water that's running off of that driveway and those rooftops? Or is that, I don't understand the drainage patterns on this site? So...
Yep, for the record, Eric Preby, a couple things. One, we will provide even more detail for you at the preliminary stage. Typically, we just show the general drainage patterns, but it is the intention, actually, if we could go back to that page again. Jay, I don't know why I'm not able to flip the pages. If you go to the other one, thank you very much. It does include the roof leaders. You can see it on the back here. Again, we'll provide more detail at preliminary, but there is roof leaders that come along the back along here. So that'll take the roof runoff is what we're envisioning doing, and putting it directly into the pond, so you'll have no nuisance water. Obviously, that's, you know, it won't be coming overland anymore. So we have that for both sides. And then we also have for the roadway here, we do have for a swale, grass channel, to be able to come straight through here and just feed directly overland into this as well. So it is not the intention to do a pervious surface, mainly because with the joint ownership, we just, for maintenance purposes, we just think it's on something this smaller. It seemed from a maintenance perspective that traditional asphalt would be better here, but something, I've noted it at least from your comment.
Thank you.
And if I may, may I stretch that conversation out a little bit?
Sure.
This project, this is a rich neighborhood and a town engineer, but we did a fairly extensive review on this, and there were a lot of changes. We went through the process, and a lot of it came from, and the reason why, it looks as though it's almost too many ponds going on here, but... but this was, the, the, the northern area was already an existing depression and it was collecting a lot of water. And because that duplex lot toward the end was encroaching into some of that, that low area, they, they were asked at that time to create that larger lot up top. So that, and, and that it's deeper than it was existing so that it accommodates the volume that was offset by the development and didn't push any additional water onto the abutters. I, this department just didn't want to see the water level during, for volume flow or volume storage to go any higher on a budding properties. And that's why that larger area was hogged out up in the northern part. The lower areas are all, um, they all accommodate what you're seeing on that plan. That duplex was always there, those two duplexes were always there through all the DEM review, even though they weren't, they're not, they're not allowed at this point or the, until approval happens, but they were always accounted for in the drainage. We were careful to, um, you know, to let, see that through. And so that's why it's all piped over, everything's, it, it's, it's, it's been, it's been, um, it's been resolved at staff level and at state level as well.
Thanks, Rich.
No, no changes at all are being posed with this that would, that would modify that, that, that existing DEM permit.
And this is, this is a fairly, uh, comprehensive, uh, plan for something that's, it's a pre-application stage, presumably due to the previous development to the north.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Mr. Daley has a, his hand raised.
Josh?
Josh Daley, Planning Board Member. I'm just wondering, um, the other lots around this, I, how many of the lots that are not developed does the applicant also own?
Uh, you know, I, you know, um, Josh, the, this is Rich, suburban town engineer again, but, um, currently, I believe, three of the lots are under construction.
Okay.
Okay, and it's all the same, all the lots you see that are along this new Magnolia are part of that same development. I believe three or four, three or four of the lots have, have, um, already have building permits, either in the process or already approved and are under construction.
So my question on, on that is, you know, I noticed that for this particular, um, pre-application that we're looking at, that, you know, this is too small to require any sort of, um, affordable units. Um, and so I was just, you know, thinking about the, the larger, um, development as a whole and, and when it might cross the threshold, uh, around affordable units.
This is Andy Tights. And, um, I, I think the problem is the, the other, the other lot wouldn't be subject to it no matter what. Um, as was indicated, these are lots that go back 70, 80 years. They were platted and approved and are legal, are, are legal individual lots. So it's not like it's a development. It's not like someone's coming in and breaking it up for here and two more there to avoid the five thresholds. Those lots on the existing platted streets were already existing and so we can't, we cannot apply that affordable housing element to them nor could impact the town, you know, um, replat them or anything else. They were legally existing lots. The only thing the town could and did do was make sure that when the road was put in, it was put in in such a way that there'd be no harmful effects to the, those property owners or the existing property owners.
Great, that's very helpful, thank you.
And, and just for the record too, I, I was involved in that too. I was at a lot of, I, I remember there was a TRC meeting just before Thanksgiving one year when this first came up. So I, I do have personal knowledge of it.
And, uh, that's a great comment, Josh. Um, that was one of the board's, uh, preliminary concerns with the project and since it predated our inclusionary zoning regulations, um, they were, did not, uh, have any impact.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, this is Jay Parker. Uh, I, I just shared the screen of the 1941 recorded plat, just to give everybody an idea of what's been discussed this evening. So this was the original configuration that Mr. Kenyon was talking about.
I have a question for Andy then, um, and I'm just going to follow with Josh's question. Since this is a four-unit proposal and it does doesn't require inclusionary reasonable housing, um, it would if it was a five. Is, is it, could we impose a condition of approval that if there was any additional units proposed in the future, since the zoning, um, density would allow five or five-point, whatever the number was, that if there wasn't an additional one, that it would be, uh, have to be, uh, proposed as an affordable unit? So if sometime down the road, they decided to add a unit in there and that, that would have to be, uh, it would have to be an affordable?
I, I think you could do that, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any further comments from Planning Board members? We do have someone in the audience, oh, Jamie?
Um, Madam Chair, just one point of clarification on the, the plan that Mr. Prevee was going over today. Lot number eight shows a apron, um, off of Ma- Magnolia Lane. It's my understanding that the landowner may have applied for a curb cut on Oak Street. Is the intent to still access Lot 8 off of Magnolia Lane or off of Oak Street?
Uh, this is John D'Agostino, for the record. The intent is to access from Oak Street, Lot number eight.
That would be a change in that layout of what is being shown.
Yeah, I ran it by, uh, Rich's office and when we applied for that soil erosion control plan, I spoke to Jamie Gorman as well. And as long as it met the corner, um, lot setback regulations, uh, there was no issue with it on their end.
Um, uh, this is Andy Tights. Again, that, that, that's not what's before you. It's not like you're not reviewing Lot 8 and the other lot. You're just reviewing the one with the four units. That's what's before you today and will be coming before you.
Andy, absolutely agree with you. It's just the, as the, they come through the application process, they may want to take that apron off of Magn-
And, um, I always recommend that Planning Board members try to go out to, uh, sites and have a look whenever possible, simply because, um, it gives you a different perspective and things do not always look the same on the ground as they do on paper or even on, uh, Google Earth. Um, I did try to go out to the site, but unfortunately, there was a large sign at the beginning of Magnolia Lane that said, "Do not enter construction," uh, going on. And the reason that I thought it may have been approved already as a town street is because there was a very shiny new sign, um, at the end of the road saying Magnolia Lane. So I think it would be helpful, uh, to have the ability to go out and look at the site. Paul?
There is Paul Jordan. If you want to go look at that site, you just have to be on a bicycle. No one will ask you where you're going or what you're doing. You can ride in, do some donuts and ride out again. And, uh, I got a good look at it a couple of weeks ago. Despite the sign.
Good to know, Paul. Um, we have a couple of folks in the audience who have their hands raised. Jim Vasquez?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, thank you for, um, taking the time to listen to what I have to say. I have several pieces of paper in front of me. One of them, including, uh, memorandum written by Mr. Teets and Amy Gons, dated February 2nd, 2016. I would just like to ask, uh, either, uh, Mr. Teets or John Kenyon, when were the roads dedicated? And who would the abutters have been at that time of the dedication to have this incipient dedication conferred upon the abutters? Uh, that's a little bit confusing to me. And is that only for Wilson Street? What was known as Wilson Street, Paper Street? Or is that also for Tarn Street?
Um, Madam Chair, let me just, uh, I, I don't know. I don't know what that particular memo said. I don't have it in front of me. I do remember being involved. Um, this went on for some time and in fact, there was a lot of research. I know at one time, I believe, that they were not properly dedicated and there were more documents that were provided, um, over time by, uh, Mr. Kenyon and his clients. And it was our ultimate decision that they were in fact, um, dedicated public streets. Um, the, it's not so much that they're in, dedicated to any particular people who are abutting the, the property, it's a dedication to the public. And when someone recorded prior to the time when there was subdivision approval, that's all you had to do. You laid out a plan, you laid out your lots and you recorded it in the land evidence records. And if you recorded it in the land evidence records and it had a street shown on it, then that became dedicated. The town was not responsible for building that street or maintaining it, but the public had the right to build homes on it and to use that street. And that carries forward and that right never goes away unless there's some actual abandonment of it. Uh, we dealt with it in another situation that there was a property off of Main Street back behind the mill. There was the same question, was it a drive? It's often a question, is this a driveway or is it a public street? But it was our interpretation when all of a sudden was done, that these were public streets and it was both Wilson and Tarn. So that's why there's, there's nothing that you'd find in the records. There would be, it would have been no notice mailed to anybody at the time. It's the recording in the land evidence records of the plan, which creates that dedication of the street.
So even though when it was sold to originally Ken Bouvier and South County Post and Bean, it references Tarn Street as a private way? That has, and that was just recorded when a new corrective warranty deed was put into record on April 1st, 2021. And it said that Tarn Street was a private way?
I, I, I can't tell you, I don't know that. All I can tell you is someone can call something what they want in a deed. If they don't have the ownership right in it, it doesn't matter. I mean, I do recall as we're thinking about it, one of the issues was there had been a later plan that was done in connection with a probate of state. And that was part of the question, this probate of state plan showed it as a different layout than the earlier plan. But the answer was that wasn't recorded for those purposes. The same thing. Someone could call whatever they want in a deed, uh, a private way or not, but that doesn't make any difference. Just like they could call it a public way. And, you know, you heard an earlier one here with a, the Planning Board has voted to recommend that the town council accept something as a public way. And it doesn't matter what anybody else calls it. Until the town council acts on that, it's not going to be accepted into the public roads and into the maintenance. And it was the same thing here.
Okay, the, the, the question that I have is that in 1941, there were no homes on the northern part of Oak Street or Tarn Street or any, um, other street, uh, abutting or even on School Street, there were no, no abutters. And the only, the only people that it would have impacted was the owner of all the, all the lots there, which were, which was George Hawley, which was the great-grandfather of my wife. So we're talking about land that belonged to my wife's family for generations, including when Shirley Southwick owned it as well because she is, um, the daughter of my wife's father's brother.
Okay. So... I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off. I'm gonna cut you off. This is Andy Tights. I, I've, I've tried to explain. I understand it's a long and convoluted history and we also have new members of the planning board. Um, and even some of the staff members weren't around or maybe none of them were around when this first came up. But the fact of the matter is, it, it's, it's, it's over with. The board has done it.
No, it's not. It's not over with.
If you feel you have any right to-
It's not over with.
No, you-
Can't be over with, Mr. Tights.
It's to this board. This board has no right, even if we agreed with you 100%, this board has no right to make any determinations about private property ownership. If you've got anything to do, you can go to the civil, if you think there's some rights in the property from your grandmother or whatever, your wife, you can file in superior court. But this board, as before it legally, Lot 57-1 and the plan to develop Lot 57-1, and as I've told them many times over the years or many other things, and people complain about ownership, whether it be adverse possession or in this case, um, deeds from, uh, 80 years ago, it's not something the board has any power to do anything about.
Well, I saw what you wrote in your memorandum, Mr. Tights.
Excuse me, Mr. Vasquez, we, we appreciate your comments. But I believe that, um, legal counsel is correct and that we do not have jurisdiction over such matters and that it is likely to be a civil matter. But we appreciate you coming out this evening and, um-
So you're telling me what I should do is sue the town?
Um, I-
That's what Mr. Tights is recommending that I do.
I defer to Mr. Tights and, um, I would like to get to the next person who wishes to speak. So thank you for coming out this evening. Barbara Lima?
Barbara, you're, there you go.
Good evening.
Yes, hi. Thank you. I'm Barbara Lima and I'm here with my husband Raymond, who everyone calls Wyatt.
Could you speak up just a tiny bit?
Oh, sure. I live at 70 Oak Street, which is a hunk of land, um, that has the good fortune to have Magnolia Lane on our southern side and also on our western side. So we're now a corner, corner road. And, and I want to quote in materials that you received, there was a great quote from Dave Russo, he pre-engineering. And he said that, uh, "There are peculiar conditions that pertain to the land in question." And I would just would like to make you, um, focus on a couple of those, um, peculiar conditions because no one has really come out and said it directly, but that Lot 7 is, um, good fortune of it is actually wetland and it's part of the wetlands, which is why you have-
Did we just lose her?
Yeah, I believe we did, Madam Chair.
Uh, perhaps she can get reconnected. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this pre-application at this point? Jonathan Smith?
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Smith, 83 Cleveland Street. Under the density requirements, you come up with 5.8. Is that based on one and two bedrooms or three bedrooms dwellings?
Uh, this is Jay Parker, Principal Planner. That calculation is performed based on the number of units and it does not apply to the number of bedrooms.
Okay, because under section, section eight, it talks about density requirements. And, you know, you've got a lot that's 56,000 square feet, but about 34,000 of it is not wetlands or detention pond. So, yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering how you get to, you know, four units and how many bedrooms and people. You also talk about being built open space for elderly as opposed to other people. So if you have three-bedroom houses, I don't think that's going to be elderly housing. So you're looking at open space for children. Um, you certainly don't have that with a retention pond behind the buildings and a swamp next to the buildings. There's actually no open space at all that are behind the garages, which you're now talking about pushing back, so there's no open space at all for anybody. So it's a very tight spot.
Mr. Prevee, would you like to, uh, talk a little bit about the open space and perhaps, um- Mr. Privy, would you like to talk a little bit about the open space and perhaps answer the question?
Sorry, I had unmute. For the record, Eric Privy. Yes, we do have, it is a 10% requirement and it can be used as private yards. It can be used as different areas. As part of the calculation, just to clarify as well, that is only for the suitable area. So there's 34,200 of suitable upland area. So out of, there's about 56,000, just over 56,000 square feet on the, on the whole parcel. So we have subtracted. That's about 22,000. As mentioned, I think Ms. Lima also mentioned that there's some wetlands on the site. And we do acknowledge that there is about 22,000 square feet as, as wetlands on the site. But there is 34,200 square feet of suitable upland area. And that's what the calculation is done off of. That wetland was also reviewed and approved. Again, it is a little unusual for a pre-application to have this level of detail. But it has already been reviewed and approved by DEM. So it's not, it's not moving. It's not going to be any larger eastward or anything like that. We can say that from, from previous reviews as well. So that, that open space areas can be adjacent to parcels. It can be incorporated as private, private drives and private areas for each residence as well.
Does that answer your questions, Mr. Smith?
I guess, looking at the plan, I'm not sure I see where that could occur. And I guess I would have a question, number eight, density requirements. So you're saying it's 5.8? I'm just trying to figure out how you, how you determine how many units or whatever you can have there, where if they're one or two bedrooms, you can have 7.71 per developable acre. Or if it's three bedrooms, it's 4.36. How you come up with the 5.8 number? I'm not sure where that comes from.
This is Jay Parker again. So the requirement that you're looking at for the bedroom, the, the difference in the bedroom density, the density based off the number of bedrooms is in the subdivision regulations. However, we have density requirements that are also listed in the zoning ordinance. There is a discrepancy between the two. And in cases where there is a discrepancy, the zoning ordinance carries over the subdivision regulations. The zoning ordinance for density requirements requires 15,000 for the first, 15,000 square feet of land suitable for development for the first two units proposed and 5,000 square feet for every unit thereafter. So using that calculation comes up with the maximum density that was previously referenced of five change. And the applicant is proposing four.
I understand now. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jay. I believe we have Barbara Lima again.
I'm sorry, we have her twice, so I'm going to allow both. Barbara, are you there?
I am here. I am. I'm sorry, I don't know what happened with the computer and I'll be very fast. But actually, my point is, sorry, and I have two things going at once.
Madam Chair, are you getting that feedback?
Yes, I am. Perhaps, Jay, could you?
Barbara, you need to turn the mic off of one of the computers or devices you're on. Madam Chair, I did. I did mute the other.
Very good.
I'm going to try. I did unmute my phone. And if I cut out on one, the other one is on standby because I would like to make my point. And it may be helpful if we go back to one of the, if Jake could put up the page for sheet four of the site plan that you were all sent.
Can you see that?
Can you see that?
But I think we might have lost Ms. Lima.
Well, while we wait for her to try to access us again via her standby, is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this pre-application? I do see Timothy Deering with his hand raised.
Hi, yes, this is Leslie and Timothy Deering here. We're at 93 Cleveland Street. We have the unfortunate, we overlooked the soon to be built duplex at the northern end of the property. Um, I, my question is, what exactly are the exemptions and setbacks that the builder is seeking in these two new duplexes being built near the wetlands? Because that new property that's going in right now is extremely close to the property line. And I know that it's probably within regulations, but we're going to be overlooking the back wall of this new duplex. So I'd like to know what they're planning with the two new duplexes near the wetlands and the lot seven that we're talking about.
They have asked for two waivers. Mr. Privy, would you like to explain your rationale for these requests?
Sure. For the record, Eric Privy. The, so the, one of the waivers that's requested is the 100-foot setback from the public right of way. So that's located along Magnolia here. The, the, we had used for the, the regular front, the R10 zoning setback. That ends up being a 25-foot setback. And that's what we're requesting, holding for regular front yard setback. And then for the other waiver is between units. It's a requirement for being 50 feet between units. And due to the unique shape of the land, we're proposing to have it be less than that. And I believe between the porches and the front ends up being about 30 feet on there. Part of that was also qualified because of the drainage. Again, as Rich Bourbonay, the town engineer, had mentioned, as, as looking at alleviating some of the stormwater in these areas and also for helping with the building of the, the public right of way here, the public road. The drainage basin had to be placed in an area to be able to pick up that as well, pick up that extra area. That puts that area to the south. That kind of puts the, pushes the development up to the north. That, that moves it up there. So without being able to use that southern area, that would be, if, if there was 100 foot on the northern side, which is that front yard setback along Magnolia, that would push all of the development down to the south, down into where a ideal drainage location would have been as well. So we are asking that it be within the regular R10 zone to that area, 25-foot front yard setback, 10 yard to 10 foot. So same, same as the, the surrounding area, R10 zone.
Ms. Deering, was that understandable to you?
Technically, yeah. So I guess there, and you're, you're asking to push those two houses 20 feet closer together than the zoning requires?
It's correct. As, as the guidance in the, in the subdivision regulations for the, the planning board has the ability to grant that waiver for design practices. Yes.
So I would just ask the planning board to seriously consider that because it seems like the housing being proposed is too large for the lot.
Thank you. Anything else that you would like to add to your comments?
No, that's it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Barbara Lima back twice. Jay, I'll leave it up to you.
Barbara, you are, you have the floor, but you appear to be muted.
Thank you. And my apologies really for this, for this technical difficulty. So I'd like to focus on the, the figure that's been given to you of how this land can support 5.8 units. That's absolutely incorrect. Because if you look at this lot, the bottom third of it is one of the drainage basins. And so you really can't count that land. And yet it is being counted, counted into the technical part. And so what Ms. Deering was said in the last one is absolutely correct. This project is too big for that little slice of land that's right there. Because you were given three different square footages for the property, by the way, in your materials. You were given that the, the land is 56112, 56192, and 56792. So three different square footages. I'm going to go with the 1.29 acres, which would be the 56112, which is actually the amount shown on the site plan. And if you take that 56112 and you subtract the wetlands, which is 22,591 square feet, that leaves you with 33,521 square feet for the remaining of that lot. But if you look at that, one third of that buildable area is actually a drainage pond. And so if you take off one third of it, that means you're down to about 22,000 square feet for four units, four garages, four parking spaces. And it just, in its peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question for sure, as Mr. Dave Russo said in his engineering thing. The, the lot cannot support that level of building. It just doesn't work. And one other comment that I'd like to make is that there's a, there's a request on the table to allow the master plan and the preliminary stages of review to be combined. Well, it's not in the best interest of the project or the town to allow this to happen, given all of the time and effort that's gone into trying to keep these wetlands as safe as they can be. And there's not a buffer requirement. There are a lot of problems with that. There are planned discrepancies. There are already errors made during the construction, like the 20-foot road becoming a 22-foot road. And there are other things too. We even have a soil erosion problem going on in the southwest corner of our lot where the excavator dug too deep into our land. So I would say this project needs more oversight, not less. And again, I really appreciate that you had the patience to allow me to say this because I think it's important for you to understand that you don't have the 5.8. There's no way they could build anything on the drainage pond. It's already in place. And one final thing, and that's that, you know, they, they talk about the DEM permit and it's DEM permit number 16-0028. Well, guess what? That permit expired September 8th of 2020. And yes, it can be, it can be renewed. It can be extended, but that hasn't been done. So this project needs a little more oversight. And again, I respectfully thank you for your time, consideration, and your patience with my technical difficulties.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands at this point in time. Thoughts from, yes, Jamie.
Joe Murphy is impatient.
Joe, go ahead.
Well, just a couple of comments. I'm hoping that in the final plan, we can maybe see a little bit of a reduced footprint for those proposed houses, maybe possibly putting a garage or half the garage, one bay of the garage under the living area to decrease the footprint, maybe using that decreased footprint to increase the setbacks. Also on the final plan, or like to see maybe the clarification of the maintenance for the retention pond. Who's responsible for the retention pond, what the maintenance plan would be? And hopefully see some dedicated access for maintenance and inspection to that pond. And then, not sure how the other members feel, but I would also like to see that condition of approval that if any time in the future, a fifth unit is proposed, that it be limited to an affordable housing unit. So those would be my, I guess, my comments.
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else? Susan?
Because two callers brought up the topic, could I ask staff to explain yield plan and square footage and how number of maximum units is determined and whether or not this is correct?
Sure.
Madam Chair, we're gonna have Jay go over that, but you know, just briefly. He stated it's 15,000 for the first unit, five for each additional unit, so they're proposing four. So they need a minimum of 1,000 square feet of upland area. And Jay can expand upon that. All right. Again, this is Jay Parker. The calculation is, the calculation yields the number of units does not speak to the number of bedrooms. The calculation is 15,000, is 15,000 square feet for the first two units, 5,000 square feet for each additional unit. The baseline number that is used to determine that is not the overall parcel size, but it is the resulting land suitable for development. So that would be the total parcel area minus out the area of the flagged wetland edge that is on site. If you'd like me to explain it in a different manner, I'd be happy to, but it really is just based on the amount of upland area and then a calculation based on the ratio for number of units.
Thanks, Jay. Paul?
So Jay, just a quick question to follow up on Ms. Lima's comments. She was concerned that the drainage basin was not part of the buildable area. But I think what you're saying is, it is, it's part of the upland and it is part of the calculation, even though it's not going to be available for any, any use by the residents. Is that correct?
That is correct. I think the, the way to think about it is if you had a vacant lot that had a wetland on it and you're, is being proposed for development, your first question would be, well, okay, what's the density that's allowed? You would use that, that vacant plan using the upland area calculation to determine, okay, this is the number of units. The rest of it thereafter, it becomes a characteristic of the site design. And it becomes a characteristic of, does it work with the overall development and site conditions and what's being proposed? That's rather subjective and it's not really articulated in the zoning ordinance nor the subdivision regulations.
And so just again, a quick follow up, in this particular location, if those retention basins weren't required, then there would be room for an additional unit or larger driveways or something. That would be.
There would be, there would be more room for further utilization of the lot. However, it wouldn't necessarily change the density calculation.
Right.
But it might change the request for the waivers.
Perhaps. A number of the, the waivers that are predominantly, the waivers that are going to be requested are related to the development standards for multi-household land development projects where you have multiple structures with more than, with two units or more. And those have very specific standards for those type of developments. And, and that's what the waivers will largely be focused on.
I think it's important for the board and the public as well to understand what waivers are being asked for and how they might impact the design, should they be granted or not. Any other comments from board members?
Madam Chair, this is Andy Tice. May I just speak a little? I, I know, we don't want to get into the issues of ownership of the property in the previous class, but I just do want to make notes for the record because I did check. There was a quoted memorandum from me from February 2nd, 2016, which I looked, which did in fact, at that point, say that the other lots on the street were all one lot. And in fact, that decision was made and by the planning director at the time, and it was appealed to the zoning board of appeal. And there was a hearing held before the zoning board of appeal. And it was at that hearing actually that further evidence was brought forth. So there is a subsequent memo dated March 31st, 2016, which both talks about the zoning board hearing on March 16th, 2016, and describes the reasoning why the town was allowing all of the other lots there, the assumption and the allowability that they were already planted. So I just wanted to note that there is a later memo explaining that.
Thank you, Andy. If there are no further comments or suggestions for this applicant moving forward, we do have a request to combine the stages of review. Please keep in mind that combining the stages does not necessarily mean mean that there will be fewer meetings on this project. We do have timelines that we have to consider. However, it does not mean that there will be necessarily fewer meetings on the topic. But this is also a somewhat complicated project. And again, I would reiterate the need for either a site visit of the board as a whole or certainly individually. So like to hear thoughts on that and also thoughts on whether or not combining the master plan and preliminary stages of review is something the board agrees with.
I guess I'll start. Normally, I wouldn't have a concern with combining those two, especially on something that's only one lot and a few units. But I do have some concern relative to the size of the structures and how that impacts or drives the waivers. And I'm thinking that similar to other projects that come before us, we may end up going back and forth a few times with trying to come up with a good plan that minimizes the impacts, yet gets the developer to where he wants to go. And I'm afraid that that may be an iterative process. So because of that, I'm not as crazy about combining on this particular one.
Thank you, Joe. That was well said. I completely agree with that assessment. Anyone else? Susan?
I'm not as eloquent as Joe, but I agree with everything he just said.
Anyone else like to weigh in on this? Paul, thoughts?
Yeah, I'll just concur. I think, you know, there are enough concerns about the project. I mean, I'm sort of born on this, the fact that they've done so much work with permitting and the site layout, the detention basins are there. I mean, this project's generally much further along, I think, than we would see at this stage. With that said, I agree with Joe. I think the, it is tight. Somebody mentioned the fact that there really is not a lot of play space or green space around the houses. So I think maybe talking about the size and the layout could be helpful. And I think I trust Joe enough that if he thinks we should flip this up, I'm happy to go along with it.
Very good. Jamie?
Madam Chair, just with regards to the request to combine the process, I want the planning board to fully understand that there are certain requirements at the master plan level and there are certain requirements at the preliminary. A lot of the detail you may be seeking is not required until the preliminary phase. So potentially combining them, although it may, in your view, complicate the process a little bit, actually perhaps gives you the level of detail you are going to be seeking. Master plan potentially just gets you to the density issue. It may not, you know, drill down to all of the minutia associated with the discussing about buffering and open space and building footprint, garage footprint, under versus over, side versus under. My concern would be if you keep them separate, you may be asking the applicant to provide a level of detail associated with preliminary at the master plan level. Again, I just want to keep you in mind during this process.
Thanks, Jamie. It does seem as though the level of detail we have been provided early on is greater even than what one might have at master plan. Could you explain to the board how combining the stages would impact our time for review? Because as Joe stated so correctly, this is a process and it will probably evolve to a certain extent, hopefully, so that we can make modifications when and if necessary, so that we have a better project and result.
So Madam Chair, I'm going to defer for a moment to Mr. Kenyon representing his applicant because he is fully aware that if the application process is master plan and then preliminary, that there's a substantial time lapse between those two processes and it lengthens the process. My dealings with Mr. Kenyon on other matters that he would probably entertain and have no issues associated with his applicant of granting any extensions necessary during, if you combine the process, to not try and get this through the planning board quickly, but to give the planning board adequate time. Jay can go over the timeframes, but again, those can be extended by the applicant and I would ask him to weigh in this evening before you make your decision on whether or not he would be more than willing to grant the necessary extensions if you combine those processes. So again, if you were tied to a certain timeframe and your concern is given the level of detail, you need four months versus two months, that the applicant's not going to sit there and say, no, you have two months and that's it.
Exactly.
That statement tonight, the decision's easier for the board to keep them separate and then you have two timeframes to run by. So if Mr. Kenyon could weigh in on that, that would be appreciated.
True. Thanks, Jamie. I guess we understand the board's concern wanting additional time to review it. Our concern would be coming back to you for a master plan with almost what you're seeing tonight doesn't seem like the best use of time. I think we'd rather come back with more detailed plans so that we don't get a master plan approval and then come back with more detailed and it's not something that the board is in favor of. As far as Jamie's comments, I would prefer having Mr. D'Agostino comment to that because it's really going to be up to him to provide that additional time during the review. So John, I hope you're still here?
Yes, I'm still here.
So John, did you understand what Jamie's asking during the, if they combine the master and preliminary plan, there's certain timeframes they have to make decisions by, but oftentimes we grant extensions of that time to address any concerns the board had. Would you have an issue with that?
I don't have any issue with that at this time.
I just, personally, I think you're better off getting the more detailed plan and reviewing that and taking your time on reviewing that than coming in with less detail. And like I said, it's not going to be much different than what's before you right now.
Mr. D'Agostino, would you be willing to put that in a letter to the board in consideration of extensions that the board might ask for?
I don't see an issue with that. John, do you?
Nope, I don't see an issue with that.
Thoughts on the alternative then of combining the stages of review? Joe, you were the first to speak up on this. What are your, any change of heart?
No, I think that there would be advantages of seeing the details and I do agree that the master plan probably would be no more than what we've already seen. So I'm okay with it as long as there is some type of agreement because in recognition that we're probably going to be going back and forth a little on the layout and the size versus the waivers to ultimately get the four units into that lot while minimizing the impact. So I'm okay with it with that grant or that understanding that we may have need extensions.
Other thoughts?
Share that opinion. And then I also want to second, you know, the comments that Joe made earlier about the size and the layout and thinking differently about that. And also especially want to underscore the agreeing on the, if there is ever proposed a fifth unit that we look at being affordable.
Susan, Peter, Paul? Peter's good. Susan, yes?
Either way.
Paul?
Yeah, Madam Chair, as the planning director, there's no attempt to influence you either way. I just wanted you to be making a fully informed decision that, again, if you just, if you separate the process that at the master plan, you may not be getting the level of detail you're discussing now. That's really a requirement of the, the applicant may be put in an awkward situation when you're going to require him to actually submit all the requirements of preliminary plan under a master plan pending process.
Andy, is it possible to have a motion that allows the combined review but that also has an addition that reflects the need for time extensions? And how would that, how would that be articulated?
With difficulty. I would recommend if you feel that way, it would be better just to do it as, as keep the stages separate. There doesn't really have to be that long a gap between master plan and preliminary. There usually is because everybody's out getting state, C R M C and D E M approvals and things like that. If they don't have those things, then they don't have it. There's nothing that legally prevents them from getting master plan approval one month and coming in, you know, the next day with the application for preliminary the next month. Or if there are changes that are required to the plan, then they can go back, they can be back in two months. So I think if that's the way you're inclined, I would just leave it as the two separate stages.
Thank you, Andy. Good advice as always. And Mr. Kenyon, based on your recent experiences with other multi-household land development projects, you know that the issues with the building size and the setbacks and the waivers are really important as we move forward on this. So the board will then take no action on the request?
I do have one question for Andy and it has to do with what exactly would be vested at master plan. So typically, when we think about what's vested, we think about density. But in this particular case, they are coming in asking for waivers. I would hate for the waivers to be vested before we get the final plans and determine whether those waivers are the absolute minimum that's, you know, required to do the project without having the details relative to size and layout and those types of things. So what actually would be vested in the master plan? Besides for density, would the waivers be vested?
Not really. I think you'd want to specify that in the master plan decision. But because as you point out, I mean, normally it's, the number of units is not so closely related to the waivers, which is the fear that it is here. So I think you would have to specify that with the waivers that they're not including the master, the waivers are not included in the master plan testing.
I guess, John Kenyon, does that create problems with this two-step process? If you get approval on the master plan, but it specifically says that your waivers are not vested?
It does, though. We've had a few of these recently and I think I know what the board is going to want before them in order to grant the waivers in the first place. So I believe the applicant's going to be providing more than he normally would at master plan in order to beat the burden of proof for the granting of the waivers. I would like to think if he came back with the detail necessary to grant the waivers at master plan and then nothing changed at preliminary, I would like to think that the waivers would then not be granted at preliminary, of course. But if he came back with substantial changes, then I think it could be denied at preliminary.
So this just demonstrates the value of pre-application. Getting all of this out at the initial stage, making it very clear that the board has concerns with the waivers and the layout and the building size and the details do determine that situation. Joe, are you any more comfortable after that answer?
I'm not sure I'm more comfortable. I think I might be more confused. I think that the applicant knows what we want. I mean, ultimately, it's probably going to go back and forth. The more they come forward in the master plan and get approval, I mean, it's probably may look more like a final plan, a preliminary plan than a master plan, but they get approval and that'll make it a lot easier to approve the master plan and the second step go into relatively quickly.
Yes. If there are no further comments from board members, let's continue on to our next agenda item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is a pre-application concept plan change to an approved plan, Westerly Community Credit Union. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Yes. Once again, it's John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant, the Westerly Community Credit Union. This property is at forty nine, seventy nine Tower Hill Road. It's a little over two acres in size and it's in the Route One Special Management District. The applicant received approval to construct a bank with corporate offices in two thousand seventeen and they finished construction in two thousand eighteen. For the past several years, they've been looking at a way of increasing the parking for the bank. And as many of you probably recall, they came before this board with a proposal for additional parking on property located at one away Kelly Way. However, as they looked at more details into that, they were concerned with safety factor with the employees parking and then walking to the bank building. So they're now instead proposing to install an additional eight parking spaces on the eastern side of the existing travel lane in front of the building. The parking will be made of pervious pavers. The additional parking requires an amendment to the approved plan and that's, we're here tonight for a pre-application on that request. The change to the plan doesn't require any waivers, but it does require a finding that any proposed parking within one hundred feet of Route One will be graded and landscaped in a manner which will have the effect of completely preventing views from U S Route One or Kelly Way. So the applicant's been working for several months to provide the minimum parking necessary for them while still meeting that standard. So tonight, we have with us Karen Beck, who's the landscape architect, along with Andrew Rogers from the credit union. And I was going to have Andrew kind of start off and explain what's going on the past few months and then how we got to where we're at.
Thanks, John. Andrew Rogers with the Westerly Community Credit Union. I'm the chief operations officer and thanks for taking the time tonight. And if I could start off and just say thanks to Jamie and Jay because we've had multiple meetings with them before bringing this to the board to just truly kind of vet out, you know, all options here. The credit union's been at that site, as John had said, for almost three years. We originally did look to purchase a lot almost next to us and seek building between twenty and thirty extra parking spots. But COVID really changed things for us and we're seeing not as much of a need in the future. And really, the way banking is going is changing by way of being more video-based and less demanding via face-to-face interaction. So we're seeing these additional eight spots as an opportunity to actually be able to really more fully occupy the building. We knew when we- Um, we knew when we built this building that it was it was probably going to be uh a a parking struggle sooner or later. But at the same token, what we wanted to do is maximize the green space when we did actually build out the building. And we were aware, of course, of the the Route One Special Management District and and uh kind of figured we would cross this bridge at some point, and and here we are. So um, you can see, you know, we are looking for uh eight spots. It looks by the the what is shown on the screen here by Jay that there could be the potential to add more over to, say, the left, but we're not looking for that. That's actually stormwater uh from roof water runoff. Uh, there's a underground drainage uh uh structure there, so we're not looking for that. But uh, we tried to to incorporate some additional screening. Um, we performed a sightline analysis as recommended uh by Jamie and Jay. Um, and uh also, we went through a a couple iterations of uh the landscaping to go ahead and and be able to screen uh through all seasons. Uh, you can see the images above uh on our screen here are are basically images from uh the winter months. And so we don't have any foliage on those trees that line Route One. Uh, there is plenty of foliage now. However, um, we are looking to go ahead and again, increase the vegetation in that particular area. And uh also, while we're at it, we are looking to a- add a flagpole. Um, but that's kind of besides the point, but we did go ahead and put that in the plan. Also, we are conscious of the stormwater. Um, you know, there was eight additional spots we'd go ahead and add. So we are looking to do pervious pavers. And we're going to, or we're seeking to emulate what Charlestown Wine and Spirits has done. Uh, we feel that they did a really pretty job as far as the brickwork, as far as separating out the the individual uh parking spaces. And it's funny to add extra parking after the fact. It always looks a little different as far as the pavement goes. So we want to really kind of actually shock the system and make it look different and be be purposeful in that regard. And then also, we have um a a structure in the back of the property as far as handling the current stormwater for the existing site. And we didn't want to tax that. We didn't want to necessarily go through the process of doing additional stormwater calculations also for what we consider to be kind of a minor modification. I understand how major you guys consider this, but we we wanted to not necessarily have to uh go through uh time efforts, extra expense of a a massive stormwater recalculation. So that's why we've we've uh proposed the pervious pavers. We think they look quite attractive, though, also, uh, which would just complement the building. So sorry, long drawn-out explanation there, but I just wanted to uh bring you up to speed.
Thank you.
And uh, again, Karen Beck is the landscape architect. She's with us tonight. I don't know if you want her to go over the the landscape plan now. We are a pre-app, but um she can go over that if you want.
Um, I I think uh it would be probably a good idea for her to go over it and then um give the board the opportunity to make comments on the various aspects of of this application.
Sure. Karen, do you want to go over that?
Sure. Um, can we uh move to the landscape plan? Okay, so if you've been to the site, um, where the proposed parking spaces are located is in a front lawn area with kind of scattered plant beds. And currently, what is in those plant beds is a variety of evergreens, um, some low-growing ones and some more upright ones. And during the course of the conversation with Westerly Community Credit Union, um, they indicated that A, they had a deer problem, which you can see on some of the shrubs that are existing on the site. And B, they wanted to increase kind of the seasonality and interest associated with this area. When we did the cross-view to see how much screening we actually did need to have for these parking spaces, it's actually limited almost not necessary because of the fact that you can't see it. We used a drone um on Route One to see how much you could see of the parking spaces from this area. We did have a grading plan existing conditions so that we could do a a true understanding of how much of a car or vehicle you would see from Route One. But in the interest of, again, of enhancing the landscape and making sure that we had uh appropriate screening, we have uh made sure that these plant beds that are existing have been expanded, kind of stretched, if you will, so that they overlap, even though it's not one continuous bed. Um, and then added a variety of different plant species, some evergreens, some um more trees that flower, um, some grasses, some perennials, those things, so that again, when the people are traveling through this area, whether you're an employee or a customer or just passing through, that it does have some seasonal interest to it. And that we did pay attention to the fact that we wanted to make sure that these weren't going to get gnawed on by the deer. That's basically it.
Uh, thank you. Um, I think that before we go into the landscaping, we should probably go back to the initial request for the parking, the fact that the parking is going to be within the required one-hundred-foot buffer of a scenic roadway. And uh, I would like to hear both um thoughts from board members, but also did have a question from Mr. Rogers as to how the calculation was made and and how the need for the eight spaces was developed. The times that I have uh driven on into the site, the parking lot has certainly not been full. And the idea of uh going into the what is supposed to be a full buffer is kind of a last resort, which I imagine um that's your thought as well, since you attempted to acquire some property prior to this. But could you give the board a better explanation of the absolute need for these eight spaces?
Sure, sure. So depending on um the day, most days, um, you know, we actually do fill up all of the employee spots, and we do try to leave at least eight to ten what we consider to be either customer, auditor, or vendor uh spots available. And so uh, we uh unfortunately recently, um, only a couple times recently, uh, but have we have an agreement with the dentist. Uh, we purchased actually their dumpster enclosure enclosure as a as a uh kind of almost a a favor to say, okay, well, when we need overflow parking, can we park over there? And we want to avoid to have to do that. Uh, you know, we do still have a a a good number of staff that are working from home right now. Uh, there's a number of finance people that are working from home. Um, you know, COVID has given us some liberty in that. However, uh, once our vaccination rate as a as a building gets above eighty percent, we expect everybody to be back in the office. So um, if you happen to have driven by this afternoon, yeah, you probably saw more than a handful of open spots for sure, in addition to what could be an empty uh empty customer area, especially with all the rain that came through. Uh, but uh, in a in a s- a a standard business setting, uh, we do expect to utilize all the employee spaces and have an additional need. And the additional need uh is is again, it's looking out between three and five years. Uh, what we house in this particular building is what we call our contact center. And uh, what we are instituting are uh video-based ATMs. Uh, so you can have a two-way video conversation in an ATM. And the staff that support that technology are within this building. And that particular department has already grown by three people since COVID, and you can imagine why. So uh, there, we aren't necessarily busting at the seams right now. However, uh, we do expect, again, continued growth of a really very healthy company. And we see these eight additional spots as being just about what we need to get to 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 fully occupy the building. Um, so that that's basically where this comes from, um, as far as those those eight spots go. Also, really, the site itself. I'm no professional at doing these types of calculations, but I did calculate out the green space needed for a site this large and um, really eight spaces is what it can support. Um, and uh, you know, we're we're comfortable with that. And uh, also, we wanted to keep in mind the uh traffic patterns and traffic counts. Um, we love our neighbors. We think they're great. Uh, we uh we the the dentist and also the Morands, John and and uh and Karen Moran, they're uh, we consider them uh friends. And uh, we want to make sure that we keep that access drive uh, you know, limited as far as the the need, uh, which is also why we installed that that secondary road uh that we had we come to the board with uh probably a a year or eighteen months ago. So um, really, we think eight is is going to be more than adequate for us, and I do understand um, Ms. Mack, that, you know, i- if you do go by over the last few weeks, few months, yeah, you know, you're going to see a lot of opportunity there for for plenty of extra parking. But when those staff members do come back and we really truly feel there's no substitution for face-to-face uh when it comes to staff and morale and making sure everybody's on the same page, uh, we will go ahead and consume that the existing lot. Um, we did it a few, again, like I said, we did it a few times pre-COVID, and we just don't necessarily want to be put into that position. Uh, God forbid somebody double park or something, and we need an emergency vehicle to go through there. That's the last thing we want to have happen.
Oh, thank you. Comments from board members? Paul?
Yeah, I would just say I I appreciate the the actual landscaping, particularly to give it some some additional interest. Seasonality, I think, was the word that you used. Um, it looks like it will also make a nice screen as well, even though it it looks like based on sightlines, screening isn't going to be a problem. Um, and I think I actually prefer this plan to what was presented a few months ago on the neighboring lot. This seems to be a lot less uh intrusive, I guess, in the in the area. It's 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 minimal um compared to what we were looking at before. Paul?
Thanks. Susan?
I agree with Paul. I appreciate this plan more than the lot across the street, which I thought was just, I thought it was dangerous. I'm not very happy about parking cars on the buffer because I understand the value of the buffer. So I think that if you were going to park cars on the buffer, that the buffer needs to be really beefed up in its buffering ability. The plants that have been chosen are great, and there's some, there's some here that are great for wildlife and they're native, and that's great. But I think that majority of them, and I'm looking at smoke bush and coreopsis, are going to be lovely for your visitors to the bank, for the parkers in this new spot, and for the folks looking out their windows. I don't think it's going to add much buffering to those driving down Route One because there's they're low-growing. And there, I think there are mostly plants that look great close up, not looking so good at fifty miles an hour. Um, so I would prefer to see more dense, maybe evergreen plantings and not and not are providing something more interesting than that, but something more I don't want to use the word dense, but something a little more substantial than peonies and coreopsis to block the view from Route One. But I also recognize that the predominant view from Route One is the guardrail. And I know this is outside of everyone's um level of authority, but there's a big hillside there in the public, in the public right-of-way that is not very pretty. And really, all you do see from the road is the guardrail. Would it be something to consider petitioning the state to plant something on that hillside or even having Westerly Credit Union put in something closer down by the roadway to block the view of that space? And so those are my thoughts.
If I if I could respond, uh, Ms. Axelrod, uh, we would actually love to do that. Uh, we have adopted two spots, one at the entry to the access road and one at the exit to the access road. And that's all the state has allowed us to actually adopt. Um, very limited. Um, you know, there there, if you do go by there and I know it is, it is, uh, people do drive, I wish they drove fifty, um, but they don't. Uh, but so, uh, you know, the that is a great question. We can definitely go back and and seek, um, you know, maybe a a higher level of support there. And possibly even Jamie or or Jay may know um folks over there that could help us answer that question because even some of those trees, and I appreciate the trees, but they they some, one of them died. And um, we couldn't get anybody from the state to even talk to us about, because we'd pay to replace it. Um, but we couldn't get anybody on the phone. Um, so I agree with you because it it is um is kind of unsightly. I'd like to be able to see something a little better there. You could do wildflowers. You could do almost anything there, really, just to go ahead and beautify it. So we would be in support of that. I just, I gotta be honest, I don't know how to do it. And so I I'd be open, maybe, you know, Karen, after, you know, we could talk tomorrow as far as maybe some strategies with principally engineering and contacts and try to try to um, you know, have an answer, a better answer for you, uh, maybe when we come back to the board.
Thank you. I I feel that your building is attractive. The building itself is very attractive, and I don't mind seeing that from the roadway. But I'd prefer not to see the bumpers of cars, you know?
Sure, yeah, yeah, I we we uh we totally understand.
Um, I I would like to add to what Susan had to say. Um, the fact that there is an access road that is essentially breaking up what would be the buffer makes it more complicated as well. And the um, the intent of the buffer, which um was um something that many people worked on for a very long period of time to establish, as well as the scenic roadway status, is something I think that should not be taken lightly. Um, the existing landscaping on the site, I think, is not adequate. You have some small evergreens, some very low-growing evergreens that will not change, some small evergreens. And this planting plan, all as Susan um referenced, is not representative of what a buffer should be. Um, it needs to be um considerably beefed up. And small, low-growing perennial flowers, while they may be uh attractive, do not constitute a buffer. And I understand the issue with um the deer, but I think that something creative needs to happen in order for this to uh be an effective buffer, both in terms of the bed um size, the height of the bed and the plantings. They really need to be significant. We have had other properties along this corridor um planted that really did not turn out um to be what we expected. So I would, I would suggest a a really significant effort be made so that you could check off all the boxes in terms of buffering. You could add some small plantings or um mid-sized shrubs to that. But the 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 primary um issue is that you're asking to put parking in the buffer. The other thing that I would suggest is there be a way that um with this approval, no additional parking spaces could be added in the future to the buffered area. So that we're assured that this is, you know, this is the maximum intrusion that would occur into the buffer. And if the the degree of expansion goes significantly beyond that, um, as Mr. Rogers stated originally, that uh adjacent parcel, they were thinking about twenty to thirty spaces. That would be far too many cars to add into an area of this um of this type. And if that is um going to be a number for the future, then it would probably be wise to consider purchasing another uh parcel, as you did earlier.
If if I could um respond to the the why the previous uh plan included the uh twenty-five to thirty spots. Uh, it number one included that many spots from a a economies-of-scale standpoint. Uh, we're looking at about one-point-five million dollars to purchase the lot and build the parking. So if we were going to go through that effort, well, boy, we might as well make sure we have plenty of parking. But it actually wasn't necessarily only for us. What it was for is we value ourselves as a good community partner, and we're very close peers with the South County Hospital. And they had expressed interest to use uh one of our many conference rooms for uh recurring trainings and so on and so forth. And even the Chamber of Commerce has sought the ability to use our conference rooms and our neighbors right behind us, uh, the Wakefield Meadows. So, yeah, I I understand exactly where you're coming from with that. Um, we would be in favor of adding that text to a approval that we uh would not add any more parking. Uh, because first, first of all, of course, we respect the board's opinion. Uh, but then secondly, uh, we don't feel we'll need it. So um, if we if we do need it, we have other facilities. We could put people elsewhere. But this will help us be able to fully occupy the building. And again, it it'll actually And again, it'll actually, net, net, when you look at the available parking compared and with these new parking spots, we believe we'll be able to hire 12 more people. And anybody who's looking to hire people knows this is not an easy thing to do right now, but we are looking to go ahead and again, expand and we source our staff, you know, right from the Wakefield, South Kingstown, Narragansett Marketplace.
Thank you for your understanding and any other comments from board members?
I guess I'm cognizant of the 100 foot buffer, but I think that the grade changes mitigates that some. So I think they can get there with the proper screening and landscaping. I'm going to ask that the, maybe in the future, when they show us a view that you show us not based on a, maybe a low lying Ford or sedan, but show what a pickup truck or a cargo van would look like. So we get a full understanding of, you know, what those impacts are going to be from the view shed. So, but I think you can get there with the landscaping.
And if, Mr. Murphy, if I could respond to that, we, we actually are considering and we're prepared to consider this. I, I don't want to make a, a full commitment to you today, but even if we needed to do compact car only in that area to go ahead and, and make sure that we do have relatively low cars in, in those spots. So we don't necessarily have to build an arborvitae wall, not that Ms. Axelrod wants that, wants that at all. But we, you know, we, there, there are, we, we do have a, a great number of staff who drive these very eco cars and they are pretty small. So we do have a, a good number of staff that could actually park there. And also, again, given the pervious parking, we like the lightweight cars on the pervious parking because we, we don't want to disrupt that and just add more to maintenance costs in the long run.
So I guess if your proposal is for compact parking and you're okay with that being a condition of approval, then showing that as a view would be great. But if your proposal is not to limit that to that and then show us the views of a larger vehicle and what that would look like.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll speak with Karen Beck later on in the week and we'll, we'll discuss both those options as far as, you know, again, beefing up the landscaping and what that would do and, you know, the actual types of plants. And again, we, we value the, the aesthetic look of the site and we really want to make sure we keep that as best as possible. We've never been happy actually with the, the, the evergreens in the front of the building. They just, they, they look pretty blah and we'd love to be able to dress it up. And this is a great opportunity to do it with some color. But knowing as, as Ms. Mack and Ms. Axelrod said, it's, you know, sometimes those aren't the largest plants and they don't provide the best screening year round. So we'll, we'll definitely take all these things into consideration and rework some plans.
That sounds great. Jamie?
Madam Chair, Jay, if you could just go back to the planning profile from the, the site plan.
Sorry, Jamie, that one? Oh, I'm not sure.
Anything, Jay, right now.
It's been a long day. Sorry, guys.
Share, screen. So go up a little bit, Jay. So you have the profile from the drone. Keep going. All right. And again, Jay, can you blow that up a little bit? Middle of the screen where you show Route one and. So the board members can see this. One of the things, you know, to Mr. Murphy's point, they shot the drone footage from four feet and, you know, typical sightline from a DOT standpoint is measured at three and a half feet. So this is six inches above it. Joe makes a point, what is, what is the view from a pickup truck or a cargo van? Well, one thing this cross section doesn't show is their landscape areas are being proposed to be elevated. And I think one thing that would be pertinent to show in the discussions so that the planning, planning board can have a more accurate rendering of what is to occur on the site is that those elevation changes associated with the landscape beds, almost islands, are clearly depicted here. So I think it's a combination of perhaps elevating those landscape beds to two or three feet in the lawn area. And then you can accommodate a different variety of, of height material. So the Maria's point, as well as Susan's point, if you had a three foot elevated landscape island, that if you put a two foot plant on top of that, that actually is a five foot buffer, you know, a five foot hedge. You're, we're missing that right now in this cross section. I think it would be pertinent to the discussion as they continue the discussion to clearly reflect that. I think that the board had very on point items that they brought to the table this evening.
Thank you, Jamie. I think that reflects many of the concerns that were voiced this evening. Are there any additional comments from board members?
Yeah, just one last question for Mr. Rogers. Did I understand correctly that if you could work with DOT, you would be willing to do additional planting in front of that guardrail? If that, you just couldn't reach anybody or?
If you, if you have, if you, Bud Craddock, no, I, I don't know who, who's the, who's the gentleman over there? Peter L. Vidi? I, I'm not sure, but, you know, we would be, we would be open to it. You know, again, we, we've already adopted both spots on either end of the actual access road itself. And that's all we were told that we'd be able to go ahead and, and in, in touch. So, you know, again, I, I don't want to make a commitment to you without speaking to my superiors that we would go and, you know, totally retrofit that whole area and then let it get wiped out every year with the snowplows. But, you know, I'm sure that there could be something to be done there. It's what we would like to see because again, we totally agree with Ms. Axelrod. We, 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 you know, we, it's a beautiful building and we have beautiful landscaping, but boy, you wouldn't really know it because you're looking at a guardrail. So, you know, it's just any opportunity because again, we understand that we're going into the buffer zone. It's one of the reasons why we didn't approach this even back when we built the building. Because, you know, why, why complicate things at that time? We knew that this was going to be, you know, kind of a, a process and we're, we're okay with it. You know, again, we, we feel that we're, we try to be a very good community partner and we want to beautify the space as best as possible. So I, I, Mr. Jordan, I, I just don't know how to do it. But if, again, speaking either with Jamie or, or Jay, or again, I, again, I work close with Karen Beck, our landscaper, to try to get some, try to get some names over there and start a conversation. We'd be more than happy to. As I think you can tell from our landscaping and our buildings, all of our buildings, you know, we don't skimp on that side of things. We, we take a great amount of pride in our physical appearance and to have it be a good representation of the business that we, we go ahead and try to promote for our members. So, so we, we'd be, we'd be open to that. I just can't commit, you know, oh, we're going to do, you know, peonies throughout the whole place or something like that. But we, we would be open to that very much because again, as Ms. Axelrod said, just, you know, not the best look and it's why you guys have that special management district. It's why you have the buffer zone. I mean, it's, it, it has the potential to be a really beautiful place, but it just, you know, it, it needs some help.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's definitely worth pursuing with DOT and they do actually have landscape architects on staff, even though they may not be the ones who make those decisions, but it is absolutely worth pursuing. Susan, did you have another comment?
I just want to throw one little thing out there. We've been talking about landscape, you know, vegetative buffers. Do Westerly Credit Unions ever put in like really big, cool art installation kind of things out in the front lawn that would be a visual buffer that's year round? That would also be kind of artsy out there, like a big globe or some kind of like, you know, like some, not necessarily like a big fountain like at Raytheon, but some kind of arty thing on the lawn instead of vegetation.
Yeah, I think I, I think I know what you're referring to. And I kind of think over of the, you know, the train station over in, there's, there's kind of an old church over there. It's a, it's, I think it's a North Kingstown Art, you know, Culture Center. They have some different things out in the front lawn. I, I don't have an answer for you on that one. We, we haven't, to be frank, you know, even kind of thought of that. So I can definitely take that back to the, the folks that I work with. And, you know, again, being a bit funkier, you know, being a bit more progressive is what we want from our demographic. And I think the, you know, the area could, could really kind of, you know, maybe really gravitate towards that. I don't know what the total appetite from your whole group may be. I don't, I guess it depends on the art, right? So I don't know.
I only speak for myself.
I know, I, I, I think it's a, it's an interesting thought. And, you know, again, we can, we can try to, try to figure something out and discuss it a bit further. I like the idea. I think it's pretty cool. And, and, you know, again, we've got a decent sized sign over there. And, and again, part of this is also to install a, a lit flagpole. But, you know, again, it's a big lawn. I'm not sure if any of you guys have actually driven by there, but it's a, it's a pretty sizable lawn. So there's going to be some opportunity, even with this vegetation, to even do something like that. You know, I, it's funny because you look at the plan and I'm sorry, I'm a chatter. So, but you look at the plan and, and you say, oh, boy, well, now it kind of looks like there is a big empty square there where that stormwater runoff is from the, from the roof. So I don't know, there could be an opportunity there. I'm not really sure.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, good luck. We look forward to seeing what you come back with.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night. Generally, the board takes a break at nine. It is now 21 past. So would the board like to have their five minute break and we'll see you back shortly? So our five minute break has ended. Just waiting for Joe and Jay and Peter to return. There's Jay.
Do we need to announce again that the hospital and the Compassion Center will not be here tonight?
We certainly can. There are several attendees, nine attendees actually, on the list, although I imagine one of them includes Robin, but.
Robin's still on speaker, Madam Chair.
Is she? Okay, very good.
She's hanging in there.
Thank you, Robin. Better luck next meeting. So just waiting for Joe to return and then we will carry on. We have one final agenda item. one final agenda item.
Madam Chair, just checking my settings. Can you still see me?
Yes. I can see you and I can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
There's Joe. All right. Why don't we carry on then? Our final agenda item is a pre-application concept plan Owl Acre Major subdivision. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Yep, Amy Saunders here for the applicant Chuck Bowes.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm going to keep it very brief. We won't talk about too many plants, but it is a beautiful site with some beautiful trees, by the way. So the applicant Chuck Bowes, Bowes builder, builders has purchased this piece of property. It is on the, just inside the corner of Sagatucket Road and Kingstown Road, as you can see. It's L shaped or upside down L shaped on the rear of the Stonehouse lot. I'm sure many of you are familiar with that piece of property that's across from the police station there. It is in a R 30 zone. The lot can be developed as a two lot conventional subdivision. In doing that with if Jay, maybe you could show that yield plan. Here we go. In doing that, we would be creating a road that is approximately 400 feet long. Just to access that lot B in the back portion of the property. Therefore, we did look into the flexible design criteria and would be proposing a waiver to reduce frontage on this particular parcel and make lot B approximately 25 feet wide and just have a private driveway. In doing this, obviously, we would be negating the, the requirement of building a private road. And it also allows lot B to be placed closer to Sagatucket Road. One of the things that we are cognizant of here is that the property abutting us to the west there is, as everybody knows, is a state-like piece of property. And we're trying not to interfere with their privacy and their rear yard area. So the closer we can get the development to Sagatucket Road, the better. And in removing the road square footage calculation, we're able, able to move that lot line a little further to the south, which would bring that lot B dwelling structure closer to the cells. This parcel was subdivided. The Stonehouse lot was partitioned back in 1993. I think Jay added that as part of the application. And in doing so, they had given up a portion of property to the town on the, on the corner of the road there. And they also imposed a no or a vegetative buffer. No buildings allowed 25 feet northerly of the Sagatucket right of way, which is a, also a stone wall. And restrict, restricted the lot only have one curb cut or opening in the stone wall to access the property. That would be a restriction that we obviously would maintain. And also like to maintain all the stone walls. There's amazing stone walls on the southerly portion and on the easterly portion of the, the lot. So as I said, you know, earlier, it is a nice parcel of land. There are some nice substantial trees. I had worked on this property years ago and located every, almost every tree on this entire site. They were looking at different developments at the time. That was with a different owner. So I do, we do have the ability to work our way around these trees and work with the property to try and make, you know, a nice development that's in keeping with the surrounding area. We would like to request that if this was to go forward, a combined master and preliminary. And I think just that flexible frontage is the only other dimensional waiver or design waiver that we would be requesting on this particular lot. Although I would like to reduce area to get that lot B further south, but I don't know if that's a, that's a, that's a deal breaker, I think. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. Chuck Bowes is here also. If anybody has any questions of the owner, as you know, Chuck is a custom home builder in the South County area and will be building these homes himself on the property.
Thank you. I do have a couple of quick questions. The change the flexible frontage, what would be the dimensions of that private road?
Of the, of the driveway or the, the actual hard way? You know, I think we'd keep it as minimal as possible as a, you know, 12 foot wide driveway to access. If that, you know, it would be going 300 feet. Well, I think it's a little less on, on this now going back 270 feet to access lot B, but I don't think that's out of the ordinary to have a, just a driveway that long. If it became an issue possibly with the fire marshal or somebody for access, maybe. But obviously, we would like to keep it as minimal as possible. And least amount of disturbance. Right now, that straight line does not intersect any substantial trees. So I haven't gotten into the real depth of it, but at this point, I didn't see anything that I felt was going to have to be taken down.
Yeah, it's certainly appreciated that you took all of those things into consideration and have a thoughtful, sensitive approach for this project. Comments, questions from board members?
I guess my only, I've, we've seen a lot of projects like this, and I'm certainly in agreement. I guess the only thing I'd like to see is you have a wooded area between lot, and I'm hoping that that wooded area stays such that the house in lot B is not visible. And I say that because it's obviously one house behind the other facing in the same direction. So I think that it would be much more favorable if the wooded area remains and the house on lot B is not visible from the street.
Yeah, I think that would be appealing to, you know, anybody that wanted to develop that parcel, but we will keep that in mind and maybe put a, an additional.
So possibly maybe restriction, which yeah, some type of restriction that prevents that area from being deforested.
Correct. Yes. Thank you.
Kind of a no cut buffer or something to that effect. Susan? Did you have?
Joe, that, yeah, Joe, that was a great idea. I like that a lot. I really appreciate your interest in protecting the trees and protecting the stone wall. Like that's, that's a breath of fresh air. So I'm really happy that you are cognizant of that need. I just have a couple of questions. I think in the special management district, we can't have any garages facing the roadway. Is that what I understand? And is this configured in such a way that car park, if there are garages?
Yeah. Yeah, you're, you're correct. That, that one lot parcel A would, and to be honest, I just, just for a scale, I took the footprint of the Stonehouse, which is a substantial footprint at 2,500 square feet and just put the, those on these two lots so people would know. But in speaking with Chuck, we're not really sure whether it's going to be, you know, a ranch style home. And we, obviously, if that's a restriction, would be fine with putting the garage doors on the rear of the, of the parcels. I mean, of the dwelling structures not facing the street. And yeah, I think that definitely can obviously be accommodated. And if it's a restriction, it will have to be accommodated.
Thank you. And then I have a question, I think, for staff. What are the restrictions with the town's right of way, the 20 foot buffer for vegetation? Or what, what, what do our regulations specify should be? How should that be maintained?
This is Jay Parker. Susan, I, that buffer relates to the previous application for the subdivision of the property that the planning board instituted on it to preserve the frontage and preserve the stone wall and added a provision that the stone wall, which I believe was, I don't want to say damaged, but not in its original configuration, that it, that it be reconstructed as part of that subdivision approval. So it really isn't, I don't, it's on private property. There is the easement there, but I believe that was instituted by the planning board for that purpose of the subdivision that was previously presented. Does that answer your question?
Well, so does it include vegetation requirements or is it simply to, to protect the stone wall?
I believe it was in, go ahead.
Yeah, I can answer that. It's, it's a deed restriction on the actual parcel. There is no, they're supposed to maintain a 20 foot buffer off of that property line into the property to the north, which we will be doing. And I think the stone wall is preserved as well. There was some note that the wall be reconstructed. I think when they put that intersection and cut that, widen that corner, or, you know, gave an arc on that corner, they reconstruct, reconstructed the wall at that time also. But we don't have a problem with putting that on some type of restriction on the plat either. I mean, I'm a lover of stone walls. Sorry, Chuck, but we will be, I think, happy to maintain the walls as is and only open for driveway cuts and as necessary to get to the rear properties.
Thank you.
That sounds like a good solution. Any other comments from board members?
Madam Chair, I just have one comment.
Sure.
I mean, we, we've talked about this before with the board, the, the notion of no cut buffers on private property. It, it poses a, a difficult enforcement issue with the town when when that part, when that easement is on private property. It serves a purpose, it does. But if you recall, I believe it was Northwood subdivision, we get into that where we purposely made the, the proposed no cut buffer actually part of the open space easement that the town had on it. It, it provides more faith enforcement capability. I'm not suggesting that in this case, but I'm just, just as kind of a reminder for the board, when we have easements on private property like that, at times it makes it difficult for staff to enforce provisions, particularly where, you know, we don't have a municipal court and enforcement action just tends to be more difficult. So just something to keep in mind when we, when we talk about no cut buffers. Sometimes it's proven over the last few years that they can be a bit of a headache at times.
I think that's why we often try to have them marked in the field as well as some reference in the deeds.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if it's, it's the planning board's intent, along with the applicant, to really protect that in perpetuity. We can suggest alternative language and mechanisms to do that, perhaps in the form of restrictive conservation easement. That includes deeded rights to the municipality, spells out legal enforcement and potential penalties and gives the ability to municipality to recoup legal costs associated with the enforcement of that. But to Jay's point, just put it, this is a no cut buffer on a plot plan, even if it's reported, becomes an issue over time with regards to enforcement. And we are living that almost on a monthly basis right now in our department.
Yeah, it's, it's actually in the deed now on that particular, on both parcels. So we can, happy to revise it and modify it to make it easier for the town to enforce.
The only additional comment I have is to the point that I believe the chair made this evening with regards to the width of the driveway, that when the formal application is submitted, the width of the driveway, if it's proposed at 12 feet, that may be pushing right up against width of that. So there may be intent also to put utilities underground there as required by the regulations. So you may actually need to remove a portion of the road. And if that is your intent in order to put access and utilities in, there should be a very detailed detail associated with the repointing and reconstruction of that end wall. And I hope that you only disturbed one side of the wall and made it clear with any contractor that, you know, it may be easier for them to take both sides down, but one would be beneficial. And then have it rebuilt to a specific standard.
That's fine. Yep.
And just as a reminder too, since we're on this and I have the regulations open, you may want to speak to the building zoning department. It looks like any single or two family household detached structures having direct lot frontage on Kingstown, Sagatucket or Curtis Corner Road within the management district is subject to development plan review.
Oh.
In the future.
Okay, meaning individual lots coming back to zoning for development plan review?
Coming back to the planning board for development plan review.
Yeah, just planning board, not zoning.
That's what it appears unless, unless it's specified in the use regs that it's a special use permit that it has to go. But it, the way that it reads, and again, I would get clarification from Jamie Gorman on that, that, that
Okay.
Sounds like it applies.
All right. Thank you.
If there are no additional comments or questions from board members, this applicant has made a request to combine the stages of review. If the board is amenable to that, would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
I'd like to make one other comment though, before we move on.
Sure.
If I may, Rich Bourbonay. Amy, are you, perhaps before the next stage, you've been able to start coordinating on the sewer and get service ability and all that, please?
Yep, yeah, oh, definitely. Yeah, we have, I've located the sewer out there, so I'll be submitting something.
And are you thinking about one, one, one connection on that rather than go one for each lot?
Yeah, whatever you'd prefer. I mean, one connection and you say bring in a manhole or one connection?
No, no, I think, well, the way you have it now, the way it's, well, it's, it's a sketch, I guess, but it's, but it shows a single connection. I, you know, I'd rather have that discussion with John Shox since he's the, you know, the keeper.
That's fine.
On that. So
Yeah.
You can call my office and then we'll coordinate something.
One, one connection would be very agreeable.
Well, that's what you've drawn here. And I didn't know if that's what you were looking to do. I, I have a feeling it may not be that, but.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever is works.
All right, thank you. And also, you may want to coordinate, you've been coordinating with Suez as well.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Madam Chair, I have one more suggestion.
Sure.
And I think I might need Andy's help on this. Andy, when they come back for combined master preliminary, could they, could that also double as development plan review? Since the majority of it will still be there. A majority of the, the material will be relevant.
Thought we had some, somewhere in the regs of the policy where we said the development plan review had to be done before something.
Development, dwell, in the case of where there's a special use permit required, development and review serves as advisory to the zoning board. But if this does not need any relief, it would not necessarily need to go to the zoning board.
Right.
Yep.
Then I think you could do it. I think you could do the development plan review at the same time.
That would be great.
Sounds good. So would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion from Joe to combine the two stages of review, master plan and preliminary. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Josh. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Joe Murphy.
Yay. Aye.
Paul Jordan.
Yes.
Susan Axelrod.
Aye.
Peter DiStefano.
Aye.
Josh Daley.
Aye.
And Maria Mack votes aye. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much.
That concludes our agenda items, but we do need a volunteer for the TRC, which is when, Jay?
July 14th.
July 14th. Do we have anyone wishing to volunteer? And as the volunteer, you do get to decide on what And as the volunteer, you do get to decide on whether you would like it morning or afternoon. Susan, was that a hand I saw raised?
Yes, I'll do it.
All right, excellent.
And Susan, we are not aware of any four-page documents you'll need to read for the next meeting.
I should have asked that first.
Very good. Does anyone have anything else to add? I just want to quickly mention that I would like to send out, I will send it to Jamie. Even though Union Studio has been involved, along with Horace Lee Witten, they have recently published their own missing middle study based on the Cape, which might be of interest to us because we do have some similarities to the Cape, particularly with regard to tourism. Perhaps not so much with water shortages, but it's, it's something that they have published, which you can receive either electronically or they will mail you a hard copy if so interested. So Jamie, if you haven't gotten that, I will send it on to you, and perhaps you could send it to the board. Great.
And I'd like to just welcome Josh to the, the planning board. He's been the chairman of the Affordable Housing. Not necessarily on it for a long period of time, but he got a lot accomplished. So it's good to have him here on the planning board with us.
Yes, welcome, Josh, and welcome, Robin, too, who is participating via phone.
A trooper.
Yes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Really? Nobody? So move.
Motion from Paul, second from Joe. Show of hands for aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.